Hey, we're live.
Oh, it is on the computers.
We're live.
Okay, gentlemen, let's, oh, we're on. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the March thirteenth meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen order. It is six oh one P. M., and I'd like to start with a salute to the plaque. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chairman Byron is on an excused absence tonight. I'd like to start by announcing, and I will do it more than once tonight, that, well, here's the official statement that has been put out on both social media and Channel Nine about our voting tomorrow. It has been moved to next week. With the pending winter storm advisory at our doorstep, the safety of our residents is of utmost importance. That said, as a result of a roll call vote taken at an emergency meeting today, and given the authority that I have as moderator for the town and school in Litchfield via RSA forty colon four, we will defer the 2017 Town Election Day event until Tuesday, March twenty-first, 2017, from seven A. M. to seven P. M. at Campbell High School. And that was signed by John Regan, our moderator. I'll also add that absentee ballots will be available, as usual, from the town clerk's office between now and, I believe, Monday night at five o'clock. If there are any questions, please call us or call the town clerk's office. And again, this was done after consultation. We had a call this afternoon, a joint conference call with Emergency Management, the governor's office, and this storm, they say, may be one for the record books, so Mr. Regan wants to make sure that the safety of all of the residents of town are considered foremost, and so we're moving the meeting out one week. Again, that'll be Tuesday, March twenty-first, at seven A. M. to seven P. M. at Campbell High School. Okay, on to the agenda of the meeting. We, the board has come out of paperwork review and the review and approval of consent items. In the consent calendar, we have, item one is February twenty-seventh, 2017, meeting minutes. We have a payroll manifest of March nineteenth of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, March sixteenth of fifty thousand, nine eighty-four, eighty-five, AP manifest of March seventh of one million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents, and March fourteenth of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred two dollars and seventy-six cents. We have both the tax collector and town clerk February reconciliations, as the treasurer's February reconciliation, and we have a veteran's tax credit of three hundred dollars. Are there any items any members of the board would like to remove? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of consent items, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Any members have any additional items they'd like to post on the agenda? Hearing none. Public input will occur, no earlier or later, I don't think, than six twenty tonight. Moving on to the business of the meeting. The first item, we have appointment of Peter Ames, Recreation Commission alternate member with a term expiring March thirty-first of 2020. Mr. Ames, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for wanting to serve your town.
Absolutely.
We appreciate you coming in. Members of the board, do you have comments or questions for Mr. Ames?
Tell us a little about yourself.
Sure, yeah, well, first of all, thank you for your service of our town, much appreciated, particularly during this time of year, and service is really why I want to get involved with the Recreation Commission. I've lived in Litchfield for over ten years now, actually just sold and relocated within town, so very happy to stay here in Litchfield. But during that time, myself and my family have benefited a lot from the work of the Recreation Commission, and so I'm in a situation now where I can give back a little bit and really want to just serve my community. Professionally, I work in public health, so I have a deep appreciation for what recreation, active recreation can mean for healthy lifestyles and choices, particularly for kids, so I feel like I could bring some expertise to the commission on that front as well. And like I said, just resold my house and can appreciate the value of having active recreation in your community as a draw. It's actually a pretty competitive community to get into these days from what I've learned going through that experience, and I think, you know, our recreation is part of that. So just want to contribute on all those fronts.
Great. Questions from members of the board?
No.
Do you have any questions of this board?
Sure, one, what's a bit of advice you'd give someone joining the Recreation Commission as far as how they can support the town?
You've served more longer than all of us, right? On that community.
Sit back, listen, and be willing to help.
Yeah.
That's all it takes, just being willing to help. I mean, a lot of times recreation, it's, it's probably one of the boards where you are more actively involved on a regular basis than anything else. Like, I did planning board for a long time. Planning board meets twice a month, and you get some material to read in between and plan for the meetings, and the meetings can be intense. But recreation, when they get involved in projects like the Winter Fest and things like that, I mean, they're months, planning and two nights a week, maybe getting ready for it, things like that. Anything you can do to participate and be willing to help, that's all you gotta do.
It's a good point, that the meetings are ten percent of the job. Right, it's everything else you do outside of it, the volunteering you do, the extra projects that happen, like you said, so.
Kurt is an alternate member as well, right? And he took on baseball last year, so, I mean, he's heading that up. Now the park up there on Jeff Lane, I mean, it's, those are big shoes to fill because that's a project that for years people have talked about and nobody stepped up to do.
Yeah.
That's all it takes, it just takes willingness.
The issue in our town also, a town this size usually, most towns have a recreation director, either part-time or full-time, and we don't. And so what I've found is that all of that work, you know, is on the commission. And right or wrong, it's unfortunate that, you know, you have to do that work, but we appreciate the fact that you step up to do that in the situation that we're in.
You know, on my side again, you know, I'll just get to what he said, you know, it's great to see people coming forward as far as volunteering their time. You know, I've been doing a long time with fire department and now this, so it's just great seeing new faces out there. I know people want to help, so greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. Well, I definitely come to be a worker bee, you know, so you got small kids, three small kids, they've gone from really small to a little bit bigger now, so I get to have a little bit of space and bring them again, so I feel like I have the capacity to help out.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
There's paperwork in this, somewhere to sign.
Yep. Yeah, well, that's what I, we have to make a motion, take a vote on this. We, right, okay, is there a motion, please?
I may make a motion to appoint Peter Ames as an alternate member of the Recreation Commission until March thirty-first, 2020.
Motion made by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome, and again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're now a hostage until 2020.
Sign me up.
Thank you very much for coming.
Have a good night.
Troy, well, he'll have to get this signed at the town clerk's, you'll have to take a vote of office. Do you want this first, or?
Is that right now, or?
Yeah. Here, why don't you take this? Oh, okay, you may not be able to.
Yeah, I would, I would just give it to the, tell the town, take it over, then she'll have it there, and you can move aside it.
Okay.
So we'll keep it.
Okay.
Anytime the town hall's open, you can come down and get sworn in. And by theory, you have to be sworn in before you can be an active part of the commission.
There's supposed to be a meeting tomorrow night, but I don't think that'll happen.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Take it easy.
Okay, the next item of business is the write-off of accounts receivable ambulance. Mr. Brunel.
Okay. So as you recall, back in the fall of 2016, this board entered into a contract with a collection agency to start addressing some of the uncollected funds that we have outstanding invoices for ambulance services. The spreadsheet that our finance director has prepared for you shows that we had sixty thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents that's outstanding currently right now. Out of that, we've provided, we've sent thirty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars to the collection agency. They indicated that the amount that I'm asking for to be written off this evening, the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and ten cents, that that amount be written off, they're not able to collect those funds because of the time constraints. Based on New Hampshire state statutes, they're legally, you're not able to go back three years, or you have three years to go after collections. And then for the collection agency not to use legal action but to use just their methods and reporting to collection or your credit report, they can't go back any further than six years. So these, this amount represents those that are past that point where they're able to work on them.
Any questions? Or comments?
I knew it was coming.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
Okay. Entertained a motion to.
What do we need, just a motion to write off twenty-two thousand, three twenty-five and ten cents?
Ten.
That's my motion.
Second.
Made by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries. Next item of business is the Primex Contribution Assurance Program, C. A. P. Mr. Brunel.
Okay. So I've attached correspondence that indicates that Primex is once again reaching out to its membership and offering the opportunity to participate in their CAP program. The CAP program is basically as far as property liability and our workers' comp. It, what it does is it guarantees that there'll be, the rate increase will be no greater than eight percent per year over the next three-year period. If your rates, because of your, you know, when they do their analysis, the whole pool and then us as an individual town, if we, you know, we have some good years, we still can have a year where we have a rate decrease, rates are stabilized, but what this does, it just, it puts a cap in place of no more than eight percent. So it's a good budgeting tool to use. The only catch is that you are, if you agree to enter into this agreement, it is a three-year commitment. Now, I think the timing of this is good. As we know, the Municipal Property Liability Trust dissolved about a year ago, year and a half ago, and we found ourselves without a public risk pool to reach out to for insurance. But there is another group that is looking at forming another public risk pool, which will bring some competition back in the market. I believe that if they're able to create the pool, it will take them one to three years to do that. So this, the timing of us coming off this CAP agreement would put us in a place where we could go out and get quotes from two risk pools.
We've already participated in a program like this before, right?
We probably did under your workers' comp. We just recently joined the property liability.
Yeah, we did.
Because I think the chief of police is the one that heads that up, and I know we have an award for this, for this whole risk avert, whatever.
We've got, yeah, the police department and through the safety department, you know, their safety program. And again, Primex provides, you know, a lot of training for the police, fire, and municipal employees.
Makes sense if it locks in for eight percent, no greater than eight percent anyway.
Does it?
At least it caps it, we know where it's gonna go. Doesn't mean it's gonna go that high, but.
The will of the board, is there a motion to participate once again in the CAP program?
I make the motion that we participate as described, like I said, I don't think it can hurt.
Motion by Mr. Brunel.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Borg. Discussion.
Are we ready to commit to a three-year program that we don't necessarily know a lot about?
Well, we do know a lot about the program.
If a new risk pool gets started, and it could take one to three years, what if it starts in one year? And we're tied into this for three more years, so that'd be two years left that we're tied into it, and what happens if this new rate pool opens up and it's ten percent less than we're paying now?
I, my feeling is that I think it's, when the risk pool opens up, I want to see what their product looks like, I want to see it tested, and I want to see what type of training they offer, because Primex is the only facility right now that can provide us with that risk management training.
Yeah, but we don't lose that.
What's that?
We wouldn't lose that, we could still pay to go.
You can't pay to go to Primex.
No, you have to be a member of the community.
Any further discussion?
Call me a gambler.
All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, three, one, zero.
I think if we had another option already today, it would be a different decision.
Yeah, and we don't, and this doesn't seem to be one readily on the horizon either.
That's what we've seen.
Yeah. Okay. Union grievance. Mr. Brunel.
All right, so as you all recall, we received a grievance back in July of 2016. The grievance was filed by the union, it was regarding Article thirteen of the existing collective bargaining agreement. They were also in their grievance filed questioning whether we were administering the revolving loan, the revolving loan, the special detail revolving fund in accordance with the article that was passed at the town meeting in 2007. Since that time, the chief followed the grievance procedure, he met with union members, listened to their case, came to the decision that this matter was not something that he could rule on, so he sent it up to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen were scheduled to have a public hearing on this matter, and it got, we were able to delay that hearing in an attempt to try to resolve this matter informally, throughout, not using the formal grievance procedure. So since that time, Selectman Lemire, Selectman Byron, and myself have met with the union membership about three to four times, and although we had some very positive meetings and thought we were making good grounds to try to resolve this issue, at our last meeting, we were informed that they had talked to their total membership, and they are still going to stand the ground that the agreement that we signed with them requires their, you know, the four fifty-seven match, retirement individual matching funds that the town matches, the second thousand-dollar match would be paid for with the town funds prior to us backing out some of the operating costs of the special detail expenses. So they, again, we were trying to sort of come to a compromise on this matter, but we were unable to do that. So the board's faced with, now we're faced with, either we go forward with having another hearing, or we decide to, you know, deny the grievance and it goes to the next level, which would be binding arbitration. I'm not so sure if having the hearing is going to result in too much, because we've already met with them, like I said, three or four times. I don't think there's going to be any new information that we're going to learn. The arbitration process will be that if we go, if we go, if we take that step, both parties have to agree to an arbitrator, and both parties will split the cost of the arbitrator. The arbitrator will do his fact-finding, he will render a decision, and his decision's binding. We were not able to appeal that, the union's not able to appeal that. So whatever the outcome is, either party can try to correct language during the next negotiations.
And at the last meeting, we both, both parties agreed that we had reached an impasse.
So can I ask clarification of what the impasse really is? It sounds like you're telling me is that their position is that no circumstances that we pay the cost associated with them being able to do the details. We must pay them first.
So.
And that just seems logically not right.
Right.
So is there more to it than just that?
No, I was surprised we come to impasse, because I know there's, you know, most of the discussion is, was regarding the cost of the cruisers, you know, the calculations that we came up with, depreciation of the cruiser, the acquisition cost.
Don't get me started on that again.
Insurance cost, right? And we.
We took a couple of the things out to try to, you know, satisfy their concerns. You know, we moved, so we, both parties moved. It was a regular, like, a negotiation.
So we took, I know that, like, the admin fees in there, administration, which, you know, I know how we defined it, not real estate, whatever. Then there's just the pure cost, the depreciation is a one-time cost that should come out when the car gets transitioned over to the roll, that's fine, shouldn't be a yearly depreciation, I don't think. The value of those cars was zero for most companies when they went over there. So you're telling me that their argument is, I get a flat tire, the car's gonna get a new tire, we can't pay for that tire unless they get that money first. So we said that would the car's not building a revenue to actually fulfill that requirement.
Basically, that's what, they thought that the intention was that, and I told them under no circumstances that I ever think that that was the intent. And the problem is, there's nothing in writing, and so the, you know, unfortunate part is when the agreement is silent like that, you reach a point where you have to get a third party to make a decision, so we're at that point, and.
And we never, we never once expressed during deliberation or during the negotiations that that was gonna be a party, that we would pay that out ahead of any of this cost?
We said it would be a priority in the language, but not, the problem was, it wasn't anything as specific as how we go down. There are, you know, you have to look at the language.
The logic part kicks in for me, and I certainly shared my opinion about the logic part, that you've got to pay for the equipment that keeps you on the road.
Well, and this was our intent, and this is what our intent is going forward.
I'm wondering if they, I mean, did we offer, I know we talked at one point, offering up, listen, we get it, but we do have these unknown costs, and we need to be able to make sure we always have something there to do it, how will we pay you out, you hit the second thousand, we pay you out in, you know, quarter increments or every, you know, when you hit, this way, you know, we're not gonna get ahead of ours, so we give a thousand, now we can't afford the tire.
No, the town's position is that you don't pay the second thousand until we know at the end of the year that we have that money.
I'm, no, I'm talking, this is, I get what we're saying, and what I'm saying is, as an option, was that even discussed or palpable?
We had several options. We discussed several, several different options.
Because, yeah, they can't put money in, because they don't, if they don't have details, they're not gonna make the money to put in there, so they're basically, we're basically creating a, they're making a chicken thing, you know?
Yeah.
There's no money being brought in, because the car rental, so-called, the detail fund, that's what's offsetting the other costs. It's unfortunate, because I would like to think a town like us can come to an agreement, we're all very close and.
I know, and we tried, and they were very good. They, we had a very respectful, we had a very productive session, they were.
I know we talked about cost raising, too, did we raise that as an issue, too, that we have to raise costs to meet the requirement? Because I know there's an argument whether we do or don't have to raise the cost of the deal.
Everything was discussed, John, at one point. There wasn't one item, I don't think, that you've mentioned that hadn't been discussed.
Okay. Got to go, whatever, I guess we go, whatever.
We go to the next step, unless you want to hold a hearing, but.
I just realized, whatever the outcome of that is, we're bound to it, whether it's their side, our side.
Yeah, that is correct, and that's the purpose of arbitration. So is there any further discussion, or is there a motion?
We have to make a motion to go to arbitration?
To go to the next step, okay. Mr. Brunel makes the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Borg.
I didn't, but I'll, I guess I'll hold it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I'm fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, four, zero, zero. Okay, and P. F. O. A. update. Hold on, why don't we, since we said public input would be at six twenty, I believe we have a minute, Mr. Kearns, how are you?
Yes, I'm okay.
Do you, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'm. Thank you. Tim Kearns, want to break your drive. Confusion, and I'm hoping you guys can clear it up. I got a robocall a little while ago from somebody saying the elections are canceled tomorrow.
Not canceled. Due to the storm and taking into account the safety of the residents, we've moved them out one week.
And I looked on the, in the internet, so you guys, and it said something about a roll call vote and the town moderator.
Well, no, it was technically.
My concern part is, I looked at all this, as I was watching this, and I don't know if you saw Channel Nine News tonight, but they said that they, everybody, John Jasper and all the attorneys all the way down through, said that they strongly recommend to continue with that, because the authority apparently isn't, it's to cancel the town meeting, not the town vote. And my concern is, a lot of people die for their opportunity to vote.
Correct.
Get it all out in advance, the snowstorm's coming, but it's not gonna be here till, there's plenty of time tomorrow, I don't understand.
No, the latest, the latest, the latest information we had, and we had, the call that we had at two o'clock with Homeland Security, Emergency Management, the governor, is that this is going to start at seven o'clock in the morning, and by nine o'clock, it was going to be snowing anywhere from one to three inches per hour. We had received several calls of people in town asking what we were going to do, because they couldn't get to the polls, and we took that all into consideration. When.
I kind of understand, but I'm trying to get the we part.
Okay.
Roll call vote, but then the town moderator, so who made the decision?
Correct, when he said, he doesn't have to take a roll call vote. What he did, the people that participated in the call, the department heads, and myself, Mr. Brown, the representative of the fire department, the police chief, the road agent, and the town clerk.
School department people?
And they were on, by phone, and the thing is.
The question here is, the, so some of the people who are actually on tomorrow's ballot actually were involved with the rearrangement of the town meeting and voted on that, is my understanding?
No, no, we didn't have a vote.
So nobody voted, but the town thing says it's a roll call vote, so what's on the thing about a roll call vote is not true.
Well, he took a consensus of opinion before he made his decision.
Okay.
It is totally his decision.
Very good. But a number of people who were actually on the ballot tomorrow were actually participated in this?
By statutorily. By our statutory responsibility.
There's a lot of confusion, because like I said, I just watched the entire state of New Hampshire, people say that what you're doing tomorrow isn't necessarily legal and it's gonna cause problems.
Many towns.
Many states, many towns have already pushed it.
Have already pushed theirs out.
So we're not the only ones.
See, there's two conflicting laws.
Yeah.
One, forty, colon, and then the other state law which says you have, you shall have elections. They're conflicting. Most of the town's attorneys, legal counsel, and all of the, most of the, well, I shouldn't say most, and the city and town clerks are, and the moderators are under the impression, and they're told rightfully so, that the moderator makes the call. And with the, with the information that he got this afternoon, and with just the opinions of what, of the people in town and the calls that we had taken.
Who were involved with the election, got it.
He made, he made the decision to move the election out.
Who posted the roll call thing, because it looks like it's.
He just put that in his statement.
Is there an official post something else?
There is going to be.
Just the robocall?
He, no, this actually, he actually made some, this was not like a public meeting, but he did make notes, and those will be published.
So there wasn't a meeting, and there wasn't a roll call? I was just getting confused, you're making me more confused tomorrow, so I guess I'm okay now.
Tim, there was a meeting of the moderator with all the department heads after having the meeting with the state.
Well, nobody from the public was invited, and nobody was.
No, no, because this, this was a conference call with Homeland Security, Emergency Management, and the governor to answer questions that had been presented, because everybody in the state was confused. All of the town clerks, the town administrators, and no one had a straight answer, and when we got done listening, we still didn't have a straight answer.
Well, they seemed to get it pretty squared away on the news about six o'clock, I guess, you guys probably already started, and probably didn't see it.
No.
But, yeah, so I'll just say this, that I have a problem with it. I think tomorrow morning, I show up at seven o'clock, I'd appreciate the vote, if it's not there, that's great. I know it's public comment, I'll let you guys get on, and you can tell me all day. I thank you very much for your time.
You have the opportunity for an absentee ballot, Tim.
Will they be available all day?
When the town clerk's opens, yes.
No, not at the voting. No.
No. We're not gonna jeopardize.
So you're not even gonna put somebody down there to make, if somebody shows up?
We're gonna have a sign.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Tim, we're gonna have a sign that tells them exactly what to do.
We have one of thirty-one towns that has done it so far. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, Tim.
Take care. Just, just to be clear, to so clarify, it's been posted on the town website, it's been posted on all of our social, social media, it's out on Channel Nine. This is not done in the gray area, and a lot of, like you said, there's been a lot of calls in the town, asking what we're gonna postpone because of the weather. I think we did the right thing, because we want the turnout. We don't need two hundred people to come in the morning and then no one else comes the rest of the day. We have a lot of important things on the ballot. This is the best decision for the town.
It was a public safety issue.
I think the confusion is, is that it does say roll call. I think what we need to clarify is that vote was all of the department heads that are involved in this or, in the safety of the community, plus the election side. The consensus was, we should postpone, the moderator took that advice and made that decision.
That is correct.
I'm not sure why Mr. Kearns was focusing on the elected person who's on the ballot making that decision.
Right, I didn't make a decision.
You represented the board, 'cause that was your role as the vice chair.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of the day, the decision was made by the moderator based on the information. He could have countered anybody's decision if he wanted to, but he didn't, because he thinks it's the best answer for the community.
That is correct.
So...
Should we ask Troy to post that code red again, so that people can get it again?
I think the confusion is, just like John said, you know, it's be, what Timmy's saying is, it was, they're saying it was a roll call vote. In reality, it was this decision of the moderator to do it.
Right.
Not based on, I, I'm just saying.
There's no difference.
There's a difference to the law, so that's what, that's what I think the argument is.
It didn't say roll call vote of the elected officials or the Board of Selectmen, it said roll call vote of the people participating.
No, I know. I'm just saying that, that's where I think the confusion is.
Really?
That's all I'm saying.
Plus, I think, before I left here, I heard Sununu also say what he's repeating. Somebody should be at the polls to pass out absentee ballots. He said pretty much everything he, you know, Mr. Kearns just said as well, so I think that adds to the confusion.
And the problem is, at, at the end of the conversation, the governor also said that he doesn't have the authority to mandate any of this.
And he did say that, but...
Okay. And the problem is, there is such confusion on this, and the whole point is to keep people home tomorrow. The state doesn't want people on the roads, so we said, fine. You don't want people on the roads?
Is there a state of emergency?
No.
There will be, probably by eight o'clock.
I bet you they won't.
Because they, and the fact they had just issued a blizzard warning also. And...
There is an electronic sign supposedly going down there.
It's supposed to be going down tonight.
So they'll say that it's been postponed to the twenty-first.
Right.
So...
Okay, next item, PFOA update. Mr. Brown?
Can you close public input? Did you close it?
Public input? Oh! Thank you. I guess I will close public input.
Well, unless Kurt has something to say.
Kerry, you got anything to say?
No.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Okay, um, attended, um, a pre-construction meeting last week regarding, uh, the upcoming construction season for, you know, extending the water lines. Um, and still three different contractors finishing up their work. Uh, the one contractor that'll be doing most of the work on the three A, um, work area is going to be starting up, um, sooner. Uh, he's actually, I guess, already been out there, saw cutting some pavement, so, um, they're trying to mobilize as quick as they can. So of course, this storm wasn't in the forecast, and I mean, I'm sure this will set them back a little bit. But, um, the, the goal here is to get, uh, things up and running as soon as possible. What we learned was the three A project is going to be the most work. We asked them about, what should we anticipate for traffic congestion? They don't anticipate that it's gonna be, uh, like it wa- it was last fall, because of the work area that they're gonna be in. They'll be away from those busy intersections, and, um, so they're really hopeful that the traffic impact, you know, will not be like it was last fall. Uh, I will let you know that our attorney has sent correspondence to St. Cobain, um, with officially submitting our demands for compensation for, uh, what has happened to our community. And we also have a meeting scheduled with New Hampshire DES officials and the Attorney General's Office, and it'll be in Concord on March twenty-third, and this will be, um, at nine-thirty AM. Selectman Lemire will be attending, and if, and if anyone else that, uh, their schedule's available, you're welcome to attend with us. Our legal counsel will be attending, I'll be attending. And the purpose of this is just to talk with the, um, state officials, to see where they're at, uh, with their investigation and enforcement, and also to share with the state officials where we're at, so, just really to keep that communication flowing and making sure we're all on the same page. Uh, public informational meeting, I'll be working on scheduling for March thirtieth. Purpose of this meeting, uh, will be, uh, for the state to be able to give a briefing to the residents, again, on where they're at with the investigation and, uh, and their discussions with St. Cobain. Penachuck Water Works will be there to talk about the construction this, this spring and, um, and how it will proceed into the summer and what we can all expect of, when we think it will be, uh, wrapped up. And also, um, I'm sure there'll be a section there too, that we'll have the, uh, Selectmen give a little briefing on where we're at, um, if we're able to talk about, uh, much of anything with our discussions with St. Cobain, because that is, uh, right now between our attorney and St. Cobain's attorney, so, but we could probably answer some general questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Onto administrative report. Troy, do you have anything?
Well, the, I'm sure that you knew this question was gonna be coming. I've been asked by, um, by the staff here at Town Hall, what is our plans for operating, uh, tomorrow, the town office hours?
It's a regular workday.
It's a regular workday.
I say, my, my personal opinion is, and I, I said this at work, I deal with, I mean, lots of customers at work, and as much as they say, I get the storm is gonna be bad, but let's get to it. You know, everybody, everybody's, we're, we live in New England, you know what I mean? Get here, and they, at the point that, that the decision's made where the roads are that bad or start to get that bad, then you release your employers. But just to, just to go, just to go out and say, no, we're gonna close for the day, I, in my personal opinion, I don't think that should happen. I'm with you, I'm with you, Steve, a hundred percent. It's a normal day, until we get here, it's valuing. I have to say, if we wake up and there's eighteen inches of snow, yeah.
Why don't we just say, well, based on conditions, the Town Hall will close at noon, if, if the conditions warrant it?
Well, now, they take annual leave if we close, right?
What? No, they get a pay.
We usually give them a pay. If they call, if they, if they report to work, and, yeah.
So here's my thing, that was my biggest issue with the last time when we closed, before, before we ever opened, okay? Is if, if somebody reports to work and we say, hey, you know, the weather's pretty bad, you should probably go home at whatever time.
Right.
Then we take the responsibility, we pay them for the rest of the day. But if somebody doesn't show up, they don't get paid.
Oh, if they do that on their own, just elect not to show up?
Yeah.
Well, it's their time.
To me, that's the rea- that's the reason why everybody has to show up. If you don't electively send someone home, why should they get paid for it? Because everybody else did, because they did do it?
Well, I, I agree, if we don't open, they should be taking annual leave. I mean, most businesses...
No, if you call, if you call off work and tell them they can't come because you're closed, you should pay them.
Oh, but what do you, I think, I think what Brent is saying is, if we were to call off tomorrow, town shouldn't pay them, they should take a day.
No.
No, if we call it off, no.
You're telling them they can't work.
Yeah.
You can't do that. I don't think that's right.
I think, I think that we should open up tomorrow morning.
Well, with that being said, we'll never shut down, we'll make them report to work, so there we go.
No, I, I, I think you, you open up tomorrow, uh, what we heard today from the briefings, two, two conference calls, that you're gonna wake up tomorrow morning, there could be an inch on the ground, there may be nothing. Um, the storm will be starting right around seven o'clock, and it'll just intensify throughout the day. They were thinking that late, uh, in the morning, somewhere getting close to noon, the accumulation could be, um, two to three inches per hour in highways, creating wild conditions. So I, I think it's one of those things where, you know, we get into work and we use our best discretion to make sure people get home before the storm really sets in.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that we let the, the staff know that if the construction, we are planning close, so they can get things done, they need to get done before they leave by noon time.
Right.
So we're not leaving anything hanging.
Mm-hmm.
And this way, the, the public knows when we're gonna be open to it. If we choose to close earlier because it gets really bad, then that's, this, that so be it.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Selectmen reports?
Do you have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing. Next regular meeting is March twentieth.
Yeah, so...
Six PM, and March twenty-seventh, at six PM. March twentieth.
March twentieth, um, well, now, let's see, twenty-fifth.
No, twentieth wouldn't be...
So the twentieth was gonna be if we had the elections, voting the chairs, swearing people in, so...
Okay, so we're not gonna do the twentieth?
So we'll...
So it would be the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Which would be our regular meeting anyway.
Right. Anything else to come before this August bottom? Our intonation attain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Made by Mr. Bork?
Second.
By Mr. Brunel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.